I'd like to call the meeting to order. Here I'll stand for five.
Norman, do we have a student lead? Callie, would you lead us with that pledge?
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where all are saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first portion of the meeting was holding a public hearing to expend the trust, uh, spend monies out of the trust for phase two of the Paul School roof repair replacement. Any questions? Stella?
How much?
Uh, the cost for phase two is forty-nine thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars.
Seven exantima?
Yes.
That's what you've got in recent?
That's what I have in my hand.
Okay, I mean it's hard. Part of the phases actually, you talk to the people and that's the actual figure?
Yes.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Judy?
What section is it doing?
Give the plan in front of you.
It's the section along the middle school and the backside where the science classroom is as well as the math classroom. Section A, C, L, and W, it looks like.
Any other questions?
Why is that section?
That was what was in the plan.
Think Mr. Adams could probably help out on that.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, that was a recommendation from, uh, when we had inspected the roofs. So that catches, that catches a couple of hips in a valley, uh, following around it.
So?
Did you put this out there or do you have, it seems you called something about one bidder got the whole bid for all phases? Is that correct? I'm not sure, that's what I'm asking.
I don't remember.
It's accurate. Your statement's accurate.
One bidder got the whole job for five years?
They were able to hold the price for that, that amount of time and...
Did they guarantee you the price?
Yes, they did.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's it. We'll move on to school board, regular school board meeting. Greg, do you want to have the students?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'd like to introduce, uh, Mr. Chris Soul, who's our seventh and eighth grade social studies teacher and, yeah, Chris has done a, a super job in putting together some programs in social studies and client studies and language arts. Number one, the National History Day, which was held here in the school for some of our eighth grade students who did these projects you see behind you, as well as some written projects over on the table here. And he also set up a National Geographic Geography Bee, which students participated in last week, as well as the National History Day. But I'll turn it over to Mr. Soul, 'cause I think he can do it a lot more justice than I can.
Thank you.
Okay, now, uh, so, is Anthony out there?
Nope. It's okay. We had a student participate in the National Geography Bee last Friday, and he made it to sixth place in the state, which is a big deal. Anthony LaBruto is our class president, and he's been participating in the Geography Bee since before coming to this school, and we were able to help him continue that tradition. And he's been working to, to make it to Nationals for the last few years. He didn't quite make it, but I mean, sixth place in the state. And I think last year he was eighth place in the state. So to make it to like the top ten in two years, we were, we were really proud of Anthony. So we'll see how he does with geography and... And, uh, the most recent sort of thing we've been working on, why don't you three join me, Brian Callie and Hunter, and a number of other students in the eighth grade? Um, we've been participating in a, an academic competition called National History Day since , uh, late October. And History Day is a national, um, competition for students to conduct research on a history project, exhibit, documentary, performance, written paper, or website of their choosing. It just has to fall in line with a theme, which changes every year. You know, one, one year it might be like rights and responsibility, one year it might be technology. This year it was leadership and legacy. So they had to choose something and prove that this, that this person or this event had some kind of legacy beyond that time period. So if you look behind you, you see a number of exhibits that students, um, accomplished. There's a, there's an exhibit on Vlad the Impaler over there, which is the castle one. Uh, there's one on Cleopatra. There's one on a, a Native American leader named Joseph Brent. There's a project on Jackie Robinson, which Brent here and one of his classmates, Dylan Brooks, worked on. And with that project, they were able to go to the state competition on Saturday, and they took third place in their judging group, which translates to like... Translates to something like fifth or sixth out of thirty exhibits, out of two-hundred-and-fifty students at states, out of twenty-five other competing schools. So it's a big deal. They did great. Um, we have an exhibit on Oscar Schindler, which Hunter, uh, Hunter Prue here completed. Um, you know, her, her thesis was that Oscar Schindler was kind of both a hero and sort of had a villainous side, and she had to do, geez, hours of research to prove her work one way or the other, and that's her exhibit there. Wonderful exhibit. Uh, we had a student do Princess Diana. We had another student do Robert E. Lee, as you can see. And, uh, we had three papers. And, uh, Callie Folkerson here wrote a paper about John Rockefeller, the oil guy. And her paper, uh, won second place in all the papers, which means she will be representing Paul School and New Hampshire in Washington, D.C. in June. We're, we're super proud of all their work. I mean, the work they did between the research in school, which they had like a half hour a day if they were lucky, considering the snow days and assemblies and all the other stuff that would, that falls into a normal school day, especially this winter. All three of them worked dozens of hours after school and in their own time at home on this. I mean, if I had actually had the foresight to write down and keep track like of a log of the hours that students worked on this one thing that culminated in so much awesomeness that you see behind you, they probably, it probably would have been close to five hundred or more man-hours worked on just this academic stuff. So we're super proud of them, and we wanted to parade them in front of you, do a small sampling of the, of the awesomeness of the eighth graders that participated. But, uh, wondering if you had any questions or comments on any of the stuff you might have seen before the meeting started, or any other words of congrats for these three that took time to be here?
I was looking over those when I got here, and I noticed that there's a lot of quotes that actually apply to, uh, all of us here, basically. Who did the Jackie Robinson? What was one of the quotes that he, he basically said?
I don't care if you, uh, wait.
I'm, I am not concerned.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with you liking, disliking me or liking you, but I care about you treating me as an American citizen or something like that.
Treating me as respectful as a human being.
Yeah.
Very good. Very good.
I would just like to comment. Again, I had the opportunity to judge all of the projects, and I was able to spend a, basically, a whole morning with all the students and Mr. Soul. It was unbelievable. I was blown out of the water with the quality of the work and how much I learned and how comfortable all of you were presenting. Uh, and really, congratulations, um, on moving to the states as well. That's really impressive, so thanks for your time. I learned a lot that day, too.
I think it was, again, one of, we had talked about was just that perseverance. Mr. Soul just said they started working on this in October and stuck with the same project and came up with this product here. Um, you know, and it took them five, six months, so, you know, I think it's just great. It shows your perseverance. I think the quality of work you've done is gonna take you very far in your academic careers.
It shows that, yeah.
Absolutely. I, I don't, I did that level of citation until I was in college, so, I think you did a great job, and you're very proud of yourselves. Thank you for coming.
Congratulations.
Madam Chair? During this part, uh, part of the agenda, I'd also, um, request that we have a motion on, uh, last, our last meeting's invoice that was tabled. It was not approved during the manifest because there were questions around that invoice. I believe we clarified those questions, uh, so we need a, we need a vote on that specific invoice, please.
Can that motion be, uh, we'll add that check to this manifest and approve it?
That you... That you would approve that, that specific invoice. We don't, we can't include it in that manifest because the, the whole manifest was actually approved at the last meeting, and it was that one invoice that was not approved. And we don't put that invoice on another manifest because it wasn't run at the same time.
It should be on a manifest somewhere.
It is. It's on the manifest that was approved last, last week, last, two weeks ago, the last meeting.
Well, my understanding was we were putting it on this, this week's manifest.
Right.
We could have basically approved it halfway in between because we found out the information. That's what my, uh, recollection was at, was at.
The, and the problem we ran into is generating a manifest that included that invoice because it was already run on a previous manifest. So in order to include it, it would be on two manifests, which means we'd see that invoice twice.
But it was voted to take that off the last manifest. So it, you, the check has gotta be on a manifest somewhere, and the action of the board was to remove that one invoice and approve the remainder of that manifest. So that check now, it has not been approved on a manifest. I, I, I disagree. I, it has, I would say it's gotta be on a manifest. And it's not on a manifest now because it was voted to take that check off the last manifest.
Looking for the board's approval to pay that invoice.
I make a motion. We've got all the information we needed.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed for the reason it's not on the manifest. I think, I think the bill should be paid, but it should be on the manifest. Is there not a way of, I guess you just can't insert it onto a, this manifest, right? Impossible?
Correct. We looked into that.
So it's basically on hold?
It was on hold. Manifest was approved, but the invoice was on hold.
Sure, do you have her? Did you get the IDs yet?
Yeah.
Down that end of the table, need to see any of this?
I think we're all set.
Bobby's here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, right?
Make a motion to approve the manifest?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye. Signatures?
Yeah, signatures. Meetings of, uh, min, minutes of the last meeting? Oops.
It's a whole sheet. Uh, page eight, our notes, PCA discussion. Like to add, under Norma Joy, ask for the formal resignation of Ralph Fogg for divulging non-public information to free private, in parentheses, non-school board members, people. I believe I, I asked you to clarify three different times, and you'd stated non-public information from a non-public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
May we add those words in there to keep these minutes as accurate as possible? Same page, um...
Don't put each one on, please.
Pardon me?
What page?
I was on page eight.
Thank you.
Second from the bottom, Norma Joy made a motion to have two to three policies placed on one agenda per month.
Mm-hmm.
It was actually, uh, the conversation began with a recommendation from our superintendent, and I think that's important to note. Mr. Tursi had suggested that we, um, limit two to three policies per month. I happened to, uh, note that while watching the, while watching the, um, event the other night.
Anything else?
Norma, I'll be right back, I gotta go.
I've got a question about, um, when we make amendments to the minutes, when do we see those minutes again? Do they go to the SAU as part of the official record with the amendments made?
Mm-hmm. That's how they're posted. They're posted after amended.
So they are available to the public as amendment. Okay, thank you. Make a motion to approve the minutes from, uh, Wednesday, March 18th, as amended?
All seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any reason why we can't do the non-public? Bonnie, we're in the non-public minutes now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes for the, uh, non-public meeting, March 18th, 2015.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a comment? Stella?
Can you legally have a public hearing to accept the grant money?
Mr. Tursi?
I'll be discussing that under my updates.
That's coming in under the SAU updates.
Can I ask questions after we discuss it?
Certainly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Judy?
Can you tell me when you'll be notified about the Title I allotment for the Dean sixteen year? So that you can have a public hearing. When is, when do you normally get notified of the Title I money?
Mr. Tursi, June?
It varies anywhere from July to mid-September.
Judy?
I would like to ask the school board tonight to slow down. The, last week you approved the RIF, which I understand needs to be done, um, because of the contractual obligation with the teachers. There's a time limit of when that needs to be done. Tonight, you're going to be discussing budget reductions. I had no intention of coming to this meeting tonight, um, until I started hearing rumors of the superintendent in the building, basically discussing these things and causing unnecessary turmoil among teachers. You're gonna be hearing suggestions from him tonight. I see on the agenda about budget reductions. And instead of just automatically accepting and approving what he's suggesting tonight, I would like you to take some time and do a little bit of research and think before making a quick decision tonight that'll affect, from what I'm understanding, teachers, students, which is totally unnecessary. There is plenty of room in this budget, if needed, if needed, to reduce this budget that will not affect teachers, that will not affect students. Your superintendent has told you yesterday to use the budget by, I don't know, three-hundred and some odd thousand dollars. Totally unnecessary. A hundred and twenty thousand dollars of that is money that was reduced by the Budget Committee for spaulding tuition. I believe that was ten students. You already know right now you're down seven, so you don't have to make up a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Not necessary. The two-hundred and seventy-three thousand... The two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars that he's talking about for Title I grant money, that number's inflated to begin with. You never got that amount of money this year. Why do you think you're gonna get more next year? If anything, the federal government's reducing funds. There's a sixty-four thousand dollar savings there. There are places within this budget that will not affect the students, that will not affect the teachers, that can be cut. I hope you listen to your superintendent's suggestions tonight, but I hope that you don't quickly adopt them. I hope that you think about it and look for yourself in this budget, because there is money. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Why is the manifest not seen before you come to a meeting?
I don't know.
Because I think I had a, we had a school association grant come earlier, and he had stated that that's what are done outside of me and they come in and fill it up, and it's just spending time here.
We'll certainly look at that. Thank you. White Mountain Survey is here to answer any questions. The board, go ahead.
Yep, I'd just like to introduce Jim Rhines from White Mountain Survey. Thanks for coming. He's here to answer any questions regarding the civil engineering services for the parking lot.
Any question? The retention trench and the retention pond, um, do you understand that, that, um, it was designed to be, once it got dug into perccable soils, um, erosion cloth in, in the trench or the pond, and then loaded up with erosion-type stone so that it's not really a cavity, but the, the erosion stone, you know, um, is there to keep, well, to stabilize the sides of the trench primarily, also the pond. But, um, the design that I had come up with, I don't know how much information that you need from me or anything like that, but I'd like you to keep in mind that the way I had designed it, the trench itself was to be in perccable soils underneath, four foot wide, cloth in the bottom and sides, erosion stone basically stabilizes the sides of the trench and also, um, keeps people from falling in, you know, as a, as a, um, safety measure, I guess. Erosion stone has large voids, and I think that, that, um, it wasn't clear on this plan, as far as I could, when I looked at the plan again, I didn't state that it was to be, you know, loaded up with erosion stone. That, that was my idea to, to keep safety, um, in mind.
Mm-hmm. Um, I mean, that's certainly something that we can look at. I, I looked at the soil types of, you know, preparing for this, and it's county soil map, maps. This is Hinckley and Gloucester soil, which is a well-drained soil for most of it. Some of it's a, a McConnet, uh, which is a moderately well-drained soil. So realizing that the grade is gonna have to be dropped there, we're gonna wanna have some test pits to, um, you know, see what the soil is, because although, uh, school districts are not bound by the town zoning, because they're a, a legal governmental body, uh, obviously, I'm sure for political reasons, the board would like to be as compliant with the town regulations as possible. Uh, and drainage, I, I spoke to the town, uh, Land Use Board, uh, not Board, but Nate Fogg, and he said that the two concerns that, uh, the town had was basically drainage, uh, which we will be able to address through, uh, stormwater modeling. Uh, the, the regulations require that you analyze, uh, the site, uh, and compare the pre-development condition and the post-development condition in a, a two, uh, ten and fifty-year storm event. They have a requirement that's impossible to meet, uh, but I think it may just not be the written precisely. And they're, it appears that they're trying to mimic the alteration of terrain regulations that the state has, which, uh, cover all projects over a hundred thousand square feet. This project wouldn't qualify, but the, the criteria that's not possible to meet is, uh, or it, I won't say it's not physically possible, it depends on the site. You have to have an ideal site to meet it is, you cannot increase the volume of runoff in the post-development compared to the pre-development. Well, if you have a, a wooded site or a gravelled site ahead of time, and then you make it all pavement, short of putting in something like porous pavement, which is extremely expensive, uh, and could easily bust a budget, you're going to have more runoff. So you try to infiltrate, which I think these stormwater trenches, uh, that were suggested on the plan that was accompanying the bid, uh, could be incorporated as well as a, a, a retention pond, if that can, can per, and I noticed there's standing water out there now. I don't know that the frost has left there, um, but we will get a, a wetland scientist down here as soon as conditions, uh, permit to make certain that there are no jurisdictional wetlands. And if there are, then we'll have to account for that in the design, and, uh, so that will be, that will be part of the process. But our, our, our intent is to follow the, the plan that was incorporated with the bid a, as closely as possible. I've seen where the outlet is and the fairly steep discharge down to the brook. And I think, you know, obviously, uh, we can't change the, the laws of physics. Some of the field can't be amended, and, uh, water is gonna run downhill, so, uh, we just need to manage it and, uh, use the best management practices through the process.
Any more questions?
Can the public ask a question?
Sure.
Have you been made aware of existing budding wetlands? And how will that affect the plan?
Uh, budding wetlands, as long as we're not impacting them, it will have no impact. The state of New Hampshire, uh, does not currently have a wetlands buffer, uh, unless it's a prime wetland, uh, which there aren't none right in this area. And, uh, so it, it won't have any impact. Uh, one thing I should have mentioned, uh, I said the town told me about two concerns. The first one being drainage, and I droned on so long, I forgot about the second, which was, uh, lighting. Uh, there's a concern that's been raised by the neighbor where the outlet will be, that vehicle headlights will be shining, uh, in their home, and so they'd like, uh, uh, some, some accommodation for that, and it doesn't seem like an unreasonable request. So we'll look at that as we're, as we're doing the design as well.
Go ahead, Judy.
I believe the town has a question.
Um, again, the, the town, the, the school district isn't subject to it. Obviously, the intent, as I said, to, to try and be as politically, uh, sensitive as possible. You try to conform with all of the regulations, and, uh, we have to have, uh, uh, an informal discussion, uh, with the planning board once the, the plan has been laid out. And that is to seek comments from the planning board. You are not obligated to incorporate them into the plan, but, uh, you are obligated to have that meeting.
Thank you.
The only other thing I'll, I'll share with you, I know in the timeline, there, there was, you know, there was a timeframe in, in the proposal. It was thinking that maybe it would be ready for bidding by, uh, the thirtieth of, of April, anticipating that the bid was going to be awarded on the twenty-fifth of February, I believe. Between the later awarding of the bid and the type of winter that I don't think anybody had really anticipated. I'm, I'm hopeful that within the next two weeks, we can start the, get the wetland scientist out here so that the field pruney has to come once, uh, or through one session. And my goal would be to have the design and everything completed, uh, starting around the middle of April, and be ready to submit to the planning board by the end of, uh, by their May twenty-eighth submit, which would put you in your planning board meeting at the June, June eighteenth, uh, meeting, assuming that they don't have any dramatic changes, because we'll try to work with, with, uh, the staff that, in the process. If there were no dramatic changes, then we might be able to have bids ready to, uh, and bidding packages by, uh, June twenty-sixth. And I, I don't know what the boards, if they had any sense of, uh, construction schedule, but I'm certain that you wouldn't start it while school was in session, and, so.
Ralph?
Do you think that any of that scheduling, the way it was put out with the RFP, do you think that, um, any of that needs to be amended to, to address frost in the ground and stuff like that? I mean, is there, or do you think the time, the deadlines that are already set up are workable, reasonable?
Yeah, I think that the ones that were set up and, and sort of amended during the site visit in January are, are not reasonable today. Like, it was that bids would be out by the thirtieth, which means we would have already had to have had a, had a planning board design review, uh, the design done. And while we have, as a result of being engaged, we've completed the deed research and are prepared to do the, the survey work and the field work as soon as conditions permit. I, I don't think that, that April thirtieth is, is possible anymore. That's, that's why I'm, I'm thinking that, uh, the twenty-eighth is, is realistic. If things went famously, if, you know, we're supposed to be in the upper fifties to maybe sixty on Friday, and if we got a, a spade of that kind of weather, maybe instead of being out here in the middle of April, we could be out here the, you know, the, the next, end of next week or something, uh, and, uh, would, you know, expedite that to the point where you might be able to be heard at the first meeting in June rather than the, the second meeting in June. But, uh, I still think you're, you're gonna be in, in the month of June by the time this is available for bidding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming in.
All right, well, thank you, and we appreciate you selecting us. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Hi.
Hi, um, if we have, um, comments or something we wanna say about budget reduction, would I do it now during the public comment?
No, we're gonna go over that in this meeting, and at that point, we'll let everybody have a chance to make moment's concerns, okay? All right, administration, financial reports, Nate.
In front of you, you have, uh, the monthly access report through March two thousand fifteen. Any questions on that?
Yeah, uh, what's going on with regular ed contracted services?
Norma?
Yes, go ahead.
You had a, um, significant increase in your extended, your extended, sorry, um, your, uh, English as a second language population this year that was not anticipated.
And what's going on with the insurances? I see that a lot of the insurances are, was there an increase, an unexpected increase in the insurance, uh?
It was, um, they were encumbered for a, a more accurate number. So they're, they're different depending on what we had encumbered. So some of them are lower, but some of them are higher. It's more of an actual representation.
Well, it appears that the, most of them are running a deficit. Was there a, an unexpected increase?
Changing plans. Changing plans, yeah.
Was that on our doing or on?
Employees.
Uh, well, what about the insurance? Did the insurance, uh, company change the?
No.
Platinum?
If you look at line one hundred, twelve hundred, five two one one zero, the very first, on page two, you can see that one's very, that's eighty-one thousand, um, over, or I should say underspent. So that's where most of the difference is, right there. So overall, there is a decrease. See it?
No. First line on page two.
Page two, the very first line on top.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I can speak to that if it, so when we prepare the budget, it's based on what the current, um, health benefits are within the district, and then come July first, it's open enrollment. So our budget's already set for the following fiscal year during open enrollment. Teachers, um, or support staff can change their plans at that point, and any of the changes in the budget might reflect those changes in plans after the budget's already established. Thank you.
Go ahead, Nate.
The next report is the revenues report through March two thousand fifteen.
Go ahead.
And then we have the, uh, monthly grant, or, or report through, uh, March two thousand fifteen. Any questions on that one?
Any questions?
Okay. And then the next report is, um, cafe services financial statements through February twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Go ahead, Nate.
And then the last report is the food service negative balance report, and I took that through March twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen.
So this is, okay.
Go ahead.
This is up more last year. I take a rate for lunches and all that. Seems like there's more lunches served.
More lunches served, yes.
Go ahead.
And that's it for the, uh, financials. I do have the auditor report for two thousand fourteen.
I do have the auditor report for two thousand fourteen. And I have Matthew Murray here from, from Sean and.
Sean Clukey.
Clukey here to answer any questions that may have.
Were copies of that report sent out to us?
Yes, Bonnie.
Can you P O box?
Not electronically?
No.
No.
I can send you a copy electronically if she wants.
I think she wanted it for this meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Go ahead.
Maybe Mr. Murray can give some highlights regarding the report. I think that would help.
Yep. Because I was out in the field today, I didn't have a chance to grab them off the other person. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
So the most important thing is the opinion on the financial statements. There are multiple opinion units. There's the governmental activities, which are, if you're looking at the financial statements themselves, pages one and two, there are governmental activities. That encompasses, encompasses all of the activities of the district as a whole. And then you've got your fund financial statements. And the difference between the fund financial statements and the governmental activities financial statements is the basis of presentation. So your governmental activities financial statements are on your accrual basis of accounting. They include all of your items that are long-term in nature, your capital assets, your long-term debt. You guys don't have any state aid grants for any of your debt. And the fund financial statements are on the current financial resources measurement focus, which is basically anything that you currently have on hand and things that are anticipated within the next year. So the district obtained an unmodified opinion on both the governmental activities financial statements. The major fund, which is your general fund, and the federal projects fund, as well as the food service fund, was the only remaining fund. So rather than second, calling it an aggregate remaining fund, we just presented it as a major fund for the district. So you can see the operation results of all the funds. The, you see page two of the financial statements, which is exhibit B. Your net position decreased twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars over the prior year. And the change in net position, there are, there's multiple things that go into that. Let me just double check and compare. So if you see page IV of the management's discussion and analysis, what that is presenting is the operations for fiscal year thirteen and fiscal year fourteen. So if you see in fiscal year thirteen, the district had an increase in its net position of a hundred and ninety-seven thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars. In the current year, they had a decrease of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. I'm going to say a substantial portion of the decrease in the current year is your, is attributable to your, your capital assets, where you had, I believe you had, actually you guys had more. The general fund that you see presented in your fund financial statements, your exhibit C and your exhibit D, at your end, you're looking at the, what the fund balance of the district is. This general fund, I believe it's three years ago, the governmental accounting standards board implemented this new standard that looked at what was previously presented as special revenue funds and what they really had to be classified as. So capital reserve funds of the school district, it's funded through taxation of the, of the individuals within the, within the town. And you're using those for, whether it be special education, building improvements, things like that. The Gatsby standard redefined what was a special revenue fund and looked at more as where is the funding source coming from? And with the funding source coming from taxation, it, it said that that is no longer, you know, a special revenue fund, it's a component of the general fund. So on page. So if you go to page nineteen of the notes, you have various components of your fund balance, which are at the bottom of page three for your general fund, they're defined in the end. So at the end of the year, the district had prepaid expenses of sixty-seven thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars for the general fund. They had amounts that were committed for the expendable trusts, which actually included, I believe, seventy-five thousand dollars voted from the two thousand and fourteen in the district meeting in March. And then the remaining balance is used to offset the tax rate. Two years ago, the state allowed for various school districts to adopt a certain RSA, which would allow them to retain to, I want to say it was five percent of their gross appropriations for the general fund. The district did not adopt that. So whatever fund balance is left over at year end needs to go back to the town to reduce subsequent year's tax rate. The federal project, yes.
Do you know what that RSA is?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I'm terribly sorry.
That's all right.
I wish I did. I can, I can get it and give it to Nathan, and then he can let you guys know what it is. So your federal projects fund, the way that the federal projects fund is designed is the district applies for, gets grants, and then as they spend the grant, they recognize their revenue to be, to offset the expenditures. So it's never going to have a, a fund balance. The grant will stay in multiple years, because I know earlier you guys were asking about when funding would be available, the amounts that would be known. It's all part of the grant approval process, you know. The district may apply for the grant, but you may not get notification until, you know, after your budget's basically kind of set. So that amount, like Michael was saying, he's not going to know until, you know, somewhere between June, August. And the, the federal projects themselves, they have no impact on taxes, because it's entirely funded through the, you know, the federal government passes the grants to the state of New Hampshire, who then distributes those to the various school districts that are applying for them. The grants may span anywhere from, I believe, like fourteen months, where some of them have gone longer. You can always apply for an extension if you haven't done everything that you want to on the grant. The state allows you to carry over a certain percentage of the grant into a future period after the grant expiration date. The food service fund is actually, your food service fund is in relatively good condition. It's not drawing on the, the general fund as much as a food service fund for other school districts would be. And a large portion of that is because the district actually goes with cafe services. Most of the school districts that we've seen, when they make the switch from running their own food service program to running with cafe services, the students enjoy the meals more, and you have better sales, which in turn allows the, you know, food service fund to almost entirely fund itself. You've got regular sales through that, which is your students who don't qualify for the federal aid. And then you also have the, a portion of intergovernmental revenues for that, and those are the students that qualify for the free and reduced lunch. And there's a couple of different varieties of that. And then there's also, within the food service fund, is the, the breakfast program and the fresh fruits and vegetables. They're all under basically the same category, so we present them that way. The district did expend over five hundred thousand dollars in federal aid during fiscal year fourteen, so you get, the district wasn't subject to the requirements of O M B circular A one thirty-three, which it's, it's called a single audit. It just, it requires more compliance testing, testing of individual transactions, making sure that the district is in compliance with the actual grant agreements themselves and the cost principles of O M B circular A eight seven, which defines this, the cost principles for local governments and, I believe, Indian tribes as well. The statement of fiduciary net position is the student activity funds, that's on page five, I'm sorry about that, of the financial statements. And that is basically, those are the funds that the school holds that are attributable to these, the various activities that the students do, whether it be field trips, you know, some, there's staff accounts within there as well. And we don't report on the actual activity of them. However, we do test transactions within those individual accounts for Paul School. I believe there's a staff account, and then there's also a student account as well. They've been aggregated together here to present as one. So the only portion of debt right now that the district has is capital leases payable, which are attributable to the purchases of, of buses for the district. You don't have any long-term bonds. I believe that the last one was paid off in fiscal year thirteen. Your other component of really debt that's long-term in nature is the compensated absences, and that's attributable to union agreements with the teachers that, once they meet certain eligibility requirements, within that actual union agreement, they're entitled to a retirement compensation that's minimal compared to what some other school districts see. The district itself has, has pooled cash. So the way that pooled cash works is the general fund gets all of the deposits, and then you'll see a corresponding interfund for the amount that would be attributable to that individual The federal projects more or less kind of uses the, the general fund cash as like a float until the grant revenue reimbursements come in, which majority of the time, your grant revenue reimbursements, you receive within one month of the actual expenditures going out. So, you know, at the end of the month, so at the end of June, all the, all the transactions are posted to the system, and then during the month of July, the district submits for reimbursement requests to the state of New Hampshire, and then they receive that back in. It eliminates the interfund balance for the time being. And then once the school year starts and the federal grants start up again, you kind of have the federal, the federal projects fund drawing on the pooled cash, and then it's a revolving reimbursement basis versus expenditures. Majority of almost every school district has pooled cash. It's a common concept. On the, one of the things you'll notice in regards to next year, and I'll make you guys aware of it. So the governmental accounting standards board is requiring all governments to allocate the portion of unfunded pension liability on their financial statements. Currently, we don't know the effect that it's going to have on any of the audits that we do on their financial statements. So the New Hampshire retirement system is going to allocate the portion of their unfunded pension obligation to all of the various contributors to it. So you've got the actual state of New Hampshire itself, you've got all the members, cities, all the member towns, all the member school districts, all the member special purpose districts, and that unfunded liability that they have is going to be distributed, and we're not even sure how it's going to be distributed currently right now, whether they're going to be doing it based off of compensation that is paid out off of the employees. So that will, it will significantly affect your governmental activities financial statements next year. So if you look at page one of the financial statements, right now you'll see that your, your net position consists of the net investment in capital assets, which is your capital assets that you've acquired, property, plant, equipment, vehicles, minus the depreciation that's accumulated on those, reduced by the outstanding debt balance on any, any of those borrowings, and that gives you your net investment in capital assets. You've got a restricted amount for food service that's restricted by state law that has to be used for food service operations. So then the other portion that you see is your unrestricted net position, which is six hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That's what's going to get greatly affected by this new Gatsby standard next year. We can't determine the amount yet, but it's going to have a significant impact. I'm sorry, I thought you had a question. If you go to page twenty of the financial statements, this is strictly the general fund of the district, which, this is the budgetary basis of the district, how it performed versus how it anticipated when it budgeted. So in the current year, you had revenues in excess of the budgeted amount by forty-two thousand dollars, with the majority of that coming in the form of intergovernmental revenue, which, if I remember correctly, comes in the form of, I believe it was Medicaid. It's one of those numbers, every school district that I went to in this past year had excess Medicaid revenue over the amount they were, that they had originally budgeted for. And that's based off of what the district submits for reimbursements to the state of New Hampshire. So, and with the district budgeting, you know, you guys set your MS, MS twenty-four. You set that in October. So you've only had three months, four, really four or five months' worth of your operations at that point. So you're projecting out the remainder of the year to try to predict what your revenues are. Your taxes, the number should always match what's there, because it's the amount that's set by the Department of Revenue Administration. Now, the school dis, uh, not the school, the town collects the taxes for the school district. The town bears responsibility for any uncollected taxes. They have the responsibility to pay over everything that the school district requires, and you guys do it through monthly installments, and you try to make, for cash flow purposes, you try to make it easy for the town. That's what every single school district does. So in the current year, the, your expenditures, you know, you were, in total, you were six hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars under the budgeted amount. I wish I had the individual line items where it was mostly attributable to, the majority of it is your instruction function. And your transfers out are the amounts that the district budgets to go to the capital reserve funds. And then the district has consistently budgeted, you know, if the food service fund runs a deficit, you basically supplement what this food service fund runs as a deficit. And in the current year, because the food service fund did as well as it did, you know, that's the whole reason why the district is under the approved, or the, the budgeted amount for the transfers out. So on a budgetary basis, you, what you have budgeted for your change in fund balance, you guys performed significantly better than what you had budgeted for. And again- Um, and again, like I said earlier, that amount at year-end is, goes into the fund balance and then that's used to offset the subsequent year tax rate. So if you look at the, the budgeted net change in fund balance, so the district had budgeted to have a negative seven hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollar change in fund balance. Seventy-five, I think it was seventy-five thousand of that was voted from surplus at the annual district, meaning to go in to fund your capital reserves and the remainder was used to offset the tax rate. So because we presented the food service fund as a major fund, um, the very next page, page twenty-one, any fund that's presented as a major fund that has a meaningful budget, we're required to do a budget versus actual comparison. So when you look at this, you know, the, the intergovernmental revenues, um, you guys receive more than you had actually budgeted for. And that is all dependent upon the students who meet the eligibility criteria to qualify for the free and reduced lunches. Um, that varies depending upon, you know, the family's income. So somebody might qualify for it in one year, but in the subsequent fiscal year, they're not going, they may not qualify for it, which then in turn kind of basically changes the amount that you're going to be budgeted for. So it's a, it's a continually changing number. Um, you do the best that you can to try to budget for the food service fund. Um, so, and that's another reason why really charges for services were below the budgeted amount is you had more people who qualified for free and reduced programs. Um, the actual budgeted amount for the expenditures, the district was underneath that, which is great. And a majority of that is because the district uses cafe services. Um, and then obviously the transfer in, the shortfall on that is because the, the food service fund, uh, performed substantially better than what was anticipated.
Matt? Matt, can you go back to page twenty?
Sure.
Um, can, in your experience, what are some of the reasons why, under your expenditures, such as the instruction, you'll see that number there? Um, what tends to cause that unanticipated, uh, lack of expenses?
Um, declining enrollment. Um, you know, one of the things too is, I believe it was in fiscal year fourteen, uh, the Primex L G C. So they, there was a, um, a lawsuit that went to the state of New Hampshire and they had to refund excess premiums that they had charged over a period of, I want to say five or six years. So within that lineup, they gave you, they gave some of the districts the option. You know, do you want the check back or do you want to use that to reduce what you're going to have to pay, you know, us in the current fiscal year? Uh, one of the school districts that I did earlier this year, they had a one point eight million dollar premium that they received. They, they didn't receive back, they used it to offset their bills. So a substantial portion, something like that, can grossly affect your budget. And especially if you guys, um, if I remember correctly, because your miscellaneous revenues are not off that much, you guys did not receive the refund. You guys used the ref- um, the premium to actually reduce what you had to pay in.
Correct.
And the majority of your, you know, your budgeted expenditures are coming from your instruction line items, you know, your eleven hundreds, your twelve hundreds, uh, thirteen hundreds, fourteen hundreds. And that, that's where your teachers are, that's where your special education, your paraprofessional, that's where every, all those people are charged. So that is more likely than not the reason why you are under the budgeted amount. And I can actually get you those numbers tomorrow if you would like me to.
I just think I pointed that out because, you know, when you see numbers like four hundred thousand dollars that weren't spent, um, it's good for people to know that, that can be, that full amount can be due to a decrease in high school enrollment as well as that premium holiday that came back on our benefits. It could make up that entire four hundred thousand dollars, which is unanticipated.
And that was, you know, none of the school districts knew that they were getting that money back. It was mandated by the state, okay, it needs to either get paid back. And then through paying it back to the actual school districts, towns, um, village districts that are enrolled in the, the public risk pools, Primex L G C, um, portions of that, there were pre-tax deductions for employees, had to be paid back to the employees as well. And I know through the town I was with, um, at today, they're having a really hard time getting the information from, uh, they, they deal with Primex. They had a really hard time getting the information as to, okay, what year is it attributable to? Which individual, individual employees is it attributable to? And what do we owe back to the employees that we now have to run through payroll that is now taxable? And they're having an extremely hard time with it. While the school districts took the premium holiday. And that is the reason why, you know, you see a substantial decrease in actual expenditures versus budgeted.
Thank you.
What it was the end of year balance, the surplus that went back to taxation?
Six ninety fi- uh, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. If you take the seventy-five out of that, seven, seven.
Well, there's going to be slight differences in what actually got used to reduce the tax rate and what was, what we reported on. We're reporting on the figures that are complete, are fully adjusted. So the state of New Hampshire, um, Department of Education, I believe the deadline for the D O E twenty-five is September first. And we didn't come out to conduct the audit until after then. So if there were any adjustments that were made, you know, the balance that we're presenting here may actually be slightly different than the amount that was used at the time that the tax rate was set in the current fiscal year. Um, and it gets submitted every year to D R A and then they ask, okay, what's the difference between the amount that you used to set the tax rate and the amount that you're reporting in your audit? And I know through dealing with, previously with Andrew, every year he'd be, he would ask us, okay, what adjustments did you make so that I can talk to D R A and D O E and let them know the difference between the amount that I reported on the D O E twenty-five and the amount that you're seeing in the audit report is because of these specific audit adjustments that the auditors made? And in the current year, um, I don't know if you guys actually have the governance letter with you? If there's anything that is a material journal entry, um, it gets put into the governance letter. In the current year, I know with what occurred at the S A U with the, you know, the business administrator, um, you guys had M R I come in and they assisted in cleaning up the records at year-end to get them ready for the audit. And based on M R I coming in there, any adjustments that we had proposed when we were out there weren't material to the financial statements. It was more or less, you know, we noticed this in the course of our audit work. Do you want us to record it? The other option is if we do not record it, you know, it gets presented to the board in a schedule of past adjusting journal entries. And past adjusting journal entries are adjusting journal entries that we determined could possibly be made, but they're underneath our materiality threshold so that we don't have to make them. And working with Nathan. This is the governance letter. And then this is, that's our management recommendations. With M R I coming out and assisting with how the adjustments are material, every year we go through certain things when we're out there conducting the audit. And we talk with what was previously Andrew, we talk with Nathan, um, anyone who was out there from M R I helping assist this year. If we came across something, we ask them, present it to them. Do you want us to make the adjusting journal entry to the, you know, to your records? And everything that we present to them normally, they say, yes, go ahead and make it. Um, it brings the records to the accrual basis of accounting. It keeps us from having to put in information like, these are journal entries that we determined, um, you know, should be made but aren't material to the financial statements. So we're having the board, um, you know, the superintendent will have him sign off and say, okay, they're not material to the financial statements. As long as I've been out here at Wakefield, S A U, Milton, we've never had any past adjusting journal entries. We present them and my personal opinion is if we're presenting them to you, it's something that probably should be made. Could I, could I steal the management letter?
Sure.
Copy of it? Does anybody have any questions on the financial statements themselves or any of the notes to the financial statements?
Judy? Is it acceptable practice to use the pooled cash to fund the grant projects and then get reimbursed?
Yes, that, that is what every school district does.
Is, is there any reason why we should, um, budget for grant funds? Or can we just continue to do it the way we're doing it?
State law requires gross appropriating. So if the school district has grant funds that it, it anticipates on getting, it should be budgeted for. Now, the, the portion of the difference between what gets, what gets submitted every year to D R A and versus what's actually the general fund operating budget and the minus the food service fund operating budget, a small portion has always been in there. And the district should gross appropriate, should budget for those grants. The budget on the grant all depends on the final awarding amount, the fiscal years that it spans, what the district physically spends on it. Um, I won't say that they're completely meaningless, but there's so many variables that actually go into it that it's difficult to present a budget for a grant fund. You know, any of the audits that we do that has federal projects, a grant fund, we don't present a budget for because it's, it's essentially meaningless.
So it would be okay to continue to?
State law stipulates that you're supposed to gross appropriate, you should gross appropriate. So one of the things that the partner of our firm has said is, any instance that in the future, the district is not gross appropriating, is not budgeting for their federal grants, we need to write it up and we need to communicate it to the board to let them know that this is something that should be gross appropriated. And it, like I said earlier, the federal grants budget itself has no ta- has no tax impact. You, you know, you're not going to raise any tax money for it. So it, it's all entirely funded through the federal government, which they fund the money to the state and then the state funds the money to the school districts themselves.
Do the majority of schools gross appropriate or do they do what the F A C has?
We have a mixture of ones that do and don't. Um, overwhelming majority of them do, but we do have a handful that don't. And you know, she won't ask for probably not writing them up, but they've always had that small portion that's been attributable to the grants. And we looked at this, that's your grants budget.
Thank you.
But didn't you just say it was state law that you have to?
Yes, it is.
So how can, how do the school districts not comply with that state law?
That, I, to be perfectly honest, I can't answer. Um, I know that through, when I was out there through talking with Michael, um, you know, he brought it to my attention and I said, you are entirely correct. Um, and it is something that D R A has actually missed as well.
Matt?
Yep.
Another question, and I'm sure it'll come up at some point. You know, when you look at, um, sending back to offset the, the tax rate, six hundred thousand dollars.
Yep.
Is it, in your experience, is it safe to anticipate a surplus that goes back to offset tax rates knowing that you're going into a budget season at a deficit as to what do you expect to operate? So can you bank on that money and not have to make your reductions knowing that you need to reduce because you don't have the monies to pay for operating the school?
So you're at, like.
In your opinion?
Funding the money back to the town to reduce the tax rate, knowing that, right, currently you're in a deficit.
Correct.
And you're prob- if you're in a deficit right now, you're probably not going to have a surplus fund balance. So it's, a surplus fund balance is nice. You don't always see that same, like the six hundred thousand dollars. You don't always see that amount going back to reduce the tax rate. Um, it varies all over from school district to school district. How well did the district perform during the year? And then like I said, certain things, your health insurance premiums last year because of the actual, you know, reduction in your bills. That's a significant portion as to why the district was able to return that money to the town to reduce the two thousand fifteen, sixteen, I don't know, two thousand fourteen, fifteen fiscal year tax rate.
Thank you.
Yes.
How important is it to, um, go through a budget process between the school board and the budget committee and then sub- uh, subject the voters to a, to a budget that they vote on? And they say, uh, this is what we're going to spend. Um, how important, in your opinion, is it to listen to what the legislative body, the voters, say?
They're the ones who ultimately decide on what is going to be the adopted budget. So you have your deliberative session and then based on the deliberative session, it gets put at town, you know, town meeting, school district meeting. Um, we've seen basically, you know, input from town citizens for certain things. But, you know, ultimately it comes down to, you know, what the board, what the budget committee, what is recommended there and what gets put to the town, uh, the district meeting. So we're go- if they're, if they're not going to approve the budget, you're, you're going to be on a default budget anyways. So whether or not they have, you know, the input, um, you know, if you're making budget reductions to try and bring certain things down, if the budget still gets voted down, oh, you're technically operating on the prior year's budget that has been adjusted for certain things, um, union contracts, um, uh, certain cost of living increases, things like that. But if your budget gets voted down, it's, it's never a good position. Um, this, you know, I do an audit for one of the towns that currently is on its fifth or sixth year on a default budget. And it makes it extremely hard for the town to do anything.
But the budget on the ballot was, had passed, but it was significantly lower than the default budget. So, um, the concern now is that, that, um, my concern is that we may go in a direction that's against what the voters asked for or commanded at the ballot.
The voters wanted an increased budget.
The voters wanted a reduced.
A budget that was higher than what was presented for the most current year.
The voters approved a reduced budget below the default budget.
Um, there's a lot of things that, you know, without actually being on the budget committee and knowing the amounts and what everything was for, it's hard for me to say, you know, the budget that was presented and passed by the voters, hard for me to say whether, you know, there are actually reasons to why the budget is lower this year. Um, certain things like all of a sudden, if you, if you don't have your, your loan payments anymore.
It was grant money. The, the school board put the grant money into the budget. The budget committee took it out. It wasn't any part of the budget amount, it was the grant money.
So could. Matt, I can clarify.
Okay, yeah.
The difference between the budget committee's number and the school board's recommended number was approximately two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And that was our anticipated revenues for federal funds. So the board's number was based on the gross appropriations. The budget committee's numbers did not include the two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So the voters voted on an eight point six million dollar budget, which is approximately, uh, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Actually, it was three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars less than what the board had recommended. So, um, we have a cap at eight point six million dollars. However, the board. However, the board, as well as myself, anticipated the expenses to run the school at that little over $9 million. So that's where we're referring to, the differences between what was recommended by the budget committee and what was recommended by the board. And now we're in the process now of coming up with those monies to run the school that were anticipated for expenses.
Okay, so basically, you're, you wanted to present the federal projects, your grants fund, as part of your budget, and then what the budget committee recommended and got voted on by the towns, the townspeople, actually did not include your grants.
Correct.
So now you're left with going back and allocating the budgeted amount that they had presented, and allocating a portion of that to your federal grants, which is shorting your general fund.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, I understand.
Can they still accept the Title I money as unanticipated grant funds?
I know. The RSA for a town is 3195B, which is unanticipated grant, or unanticipated funds, and that allows a town to increase their anticipated revenues and increase their expenditures. I would actually, we've never run into the situation where something like this occurs, where the school district basically wants to raise and appropriate unanticipated money. I would have to look at the RSAs to figure out if there is a specific RSA attributable to that. We've never run into that situation before.
I'm sure.
Go ahead.
I can answer that question, Judy. As of 4:00 PM yesterday afternoon, I received a response from DRA that we cannot consider those federal monies as unanticipated. Therefore, my thought of being able to approach those as unanticipated revenues and follow the RSA with a public hearing is null and void at this point. So we need to absorb those monies in our operating budget.
Reviewing the deliberative session discussion, it was clear, our district, our school district attorney had stated that in our budget, it did include the 273 that was the grant money. So, I mean...
You clarified it at your public hearing.
Yes.
But it's still...
It was still reduced out of the operating budget.
I'm a member of the budget committee, I'd like to clear this up. The budget committee member is what was presented to us for the operating budget. That is the number the voters vote on. He, Mr. Tracy, had inserted in that Warren article what the school board recommended. But that really doesn't matter because they vote on the budget committee number. Now, if they wanted that $273,000 in there at deliberative session, somebody should have made a motion to add that $273,000 to the budget, and they did not. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Do you want me to review the management recommendations?
Scale of one to 10, are we, five, eight?
It's not attributable to, you know, the records at the SAU, anything like that. So as I said earlier, with the student activity funds, which are the fiduciary funds, we're required to test transactions through the student activity funds. Even though we don't report on the activity, but it gives us assurance as to, you know, the actual physical records of the student activity funds themselves. So in reviewing the student activity funds, you know, we had noted that there were receipts issued for deposits, but the receipts didn't contain a description of where the funding source came from, and it was only supported by a deposit ticket. One of the things that we like to see is, we like to see the backup to it. We like to know where the funding is coming from, so that way there, when we're looking at the student activity funds themselves, we know, okay, the funding came from, you know, grade five, and it got deposited into grade five. So that's one of the things, you know, and I made the recommend, you know, we made the recommendations, and I had sent Nathan basically something that we had seen some of our other school districts do, where they do a, an activity, there's a check reimbursement form that a lot of the student activity funds do, and then there's basically like a deposit activity form. So on the deposit activity form, we like to see the date that it was received, what it's attributable to, the student activity that it's going to, as well as the person signing off saying, this is the money that I received. You know, if it's a teacher from, and they're getting money for a field trip, something like that, we like to see the student's name, whether it was received in cash or check, and if it was checked, we like to see, you know, check number, so that way there, it's documenting that here's where all the funds came from. And then the other portion of that is, we like to see the person who is ultimately going to be depositing the funds, we like to see them sign off and say, what I received is the amount that that individual is saying that they remitted to me. And that was one of the issues that we, you know, discovered when we were doing the receipts during the current year. And then some of the deposits too, it was held in excess of 10 days. So the date that it was stated on the receipt, from that date until the day that it got deposited, it was in excess of 10 days. You know, state law for towns is when funds remitted from all departments are cumulative to, I believe it's $1,500, or at a minimum weekly, whichever comes first. So if by Wednesday, the town, you know, the town clerk, tax collector, the selectmen's office, if they have $1,500 worth of funds, they have to deposit that day next business morning. So we would, we would like to see deposits at a minimum weekly. It reduces the risk of susceptibility to theft, and then it also reduces the risk of improper reporting within, you know, the student activity funds themselves. That was, those are two of the issues. And then another issue that we had, like I said, we test disbursements that are made. And we noted that a dispersion that was made out of staff account didn't obtain any supporting documentation to support that actual dispersion made, whether, you know... So we see the check coming out of the student activity funds, which the SAU that manages, they have nothing to do with the student activity funds. It's all done in-house at the school themselves. So we didn't find anything in all the documentation that was given to us to support that dispersion that was made. And again, I sent Nathan something that, you know, one of the school districts that we deal with, basically the form that they use, it's a dispersion request form. And what we would like to see is the name of who's going to get, who's being paid, the amount, the person who is author, or requesting the authorization, and then the person who's going to authorize the dispersion, as well as accompanying that with the actual copy of the invoice itself. Those, if you, you know, if the district were to start doing those things, which I gave Nathan, you know, a form that if you distribute this to the school, have them fill something like this out on all receipts, on all disbursements, and then if it, you know, it gets filed away, and when we come out for the audit, you know, we've got a listing of, here's all the disbursements that are made, we can go through, and, okay, we're going to pull this one, and then look for the documentation for it. And, you know, you've got the check request form, and even on the deposits, the same thing, you've got your deposit receipt form. Those are, and it's almost common for student activity funds to have similar instances as what occurred out here. Almost every school district that we go to, we have the same issue, whether it be deposits being held for an excessive amount of time, an actual dispersion made, and there's no authorization for it, or, you know, check went out, nobody thought of getting the invoice for it, and the same thing with the not having dual signatures on the receipts, not having where the funding source came from. It's common practice, and it's because the student activity funds are managed at the school itself, they're not managed at the SAU, or, you know, actually, no, it would only be the SAU, because the larger school districts that, it's a school district, SAU combined into one.
That's a fixable problem with the solutions you've offered.
Absolutely. And that was, even when I was out there, you know, we discussed this with Michael, and he said, let's do something right now to fix this. What, you know, give us your recommendation, give us an example of something that we can do, so that we can correct this problem, so that in future, you know, in future audits, we do not have this issue. Michael has actually, in dealing with all the other school districts that I deal with, we very rarely see the superintendent. He makes himself available to us every year when we come out there. It's a pleasure working with him, with all of his staff, everyone, you know, this is Nathan's first year, he kind of came in, and things weren't necessarily the best that they could be, but working with him, anything that we needed, by all means, you would have it to us within five, 10 minutes. For what he came into, he did a fantastic job.
I can't reach that far out there.
I'll do it.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Hey, you see, the first item on the agenda under my section on page 33 is the updated enrollment numbers. You'll see that at Paul School, we're at 427 students. At Spalding, we're at 174, Kingswood, 19, Lakeside, 1. So our total enrollment is 621 students. I'd like to, I'd like the board to note that if you look at our total high school enrollment of 174 students, 19, and 1, that puts us at the 194 total high school students. We had budgeted the 200, anticipated 204 students at the high school, and at the deliberative session, 10 students were reduced from that line. You can see here on these enrollment numbers, those 10 students have, we no longer have those 10 students. So fortunately, unfortunately, the number went down, but fortunately, we now do not have to find that $120,620 in next year's budget. So that's coming off the top of my next conversation. You'll also see the updates on the missing residency forms. I'll give you an update as for our high school residency forms. I've made arrangements with Superintendent Hopkins in Rochester that we will be holding students' 2015-16 schedule until those forms are turned in. A letter is going out to the parents. The letter that's going out to parents, they've already received two letters, and our truancy officer has paid a home visit, and now Spalding is working with us to hold the students' schedule for 15-16 school year until those residency forms are turned in. So I would anticipate that that number's going to drop dramatically once they start trying to sign up for classes, and Spalding is holding their schedules. I'm going to put that out there at the beginning of the school year next year as well, so that any residency forms that aren't received prior to the beginning of the school year, that the schedules are held, so that we don't have to deal with this throughout the year. Any questions on the enrollments?
it looks like, I think I'm going around right, that the next year's high school enrollment is 186, which is eight less than 194.
So what we're looking at now is originally what I'd already presented to the board as a possible budget reduction of $393,000, not looking at that $120,000 anymore, as well as we anticipated the $273,000 of federal funds, and that was a estimate on the high end. Again, that was based on a three to five-year average, and I took the high of those numbers to do the original estimate. What I did now is I took the actual, what we currently receive for fiscal year 14-15 for our Title I and our Title II monies, and I'm using that number to determine what budget reductions we need to come up with, and that comes out to $240,151. So what you have in front of you is a list of proposed reductions within the budget in order to be able to continue operating our Title I programming, as well as professional development in schools. So you'll see under the 1100 function, the elementary teacher salaries, it's a reduction of $78,500, and that's due to, we will not be filling a retirement position with a new hire. We will be, we would potentially be eliminating the math intervention program instead, and moving current staffing around within the school to fill that retirement position. So we would not take on the expense of a new hire.
Wasn't there a second position that was retiring also next year?
Yes, however, that needs to be filled. That's a required position.
Would it be filled at the same rate, or would it be filled at a lower salary?
We budgeted at a lower salary for that position. Next, you'll see in the regular education, we're looking at a reduction of $19,327 in And then the 1200, special education, this tuition public, this is a reduction of the Bright Beginnings program. This would be providing services to our preschool students in other public preschools, preferably those within Wakefield. And I also gave you a breakdown as to what that would look like and where that number of $86,227 comes from. You would see that we will maintain our contracted services for speech, we'd remain, we would maintain our contracted services for OT and PT, we would have a .5 full-time, so a half-position for certified special ed teacher, as well as a half-time certified speech and language assistant, and we're anticipating preschool tuition at $20,000. That all comes out to operating that, the services within local preschools at $132,505. We estimated for next year, the cost of maintaining Bright Beginnings as it currently stands at $218,732. So the difference between those two numbers is $86,227. Next is the 2610 function, the operation and maintenance. We looked at not doing the work on the softball field, that was at $12,500, and also not replacing the curtains in the multipurpose room. That comes out to $21,178 of the total. We also looked at not purchasing any replacement furniture or fixtures of $14,481. And then the technology line, the 2820, would not be replacing 12 teacher computers at $20,438. If you add all those numbers up, it comes out to the $20,151. And I just wanted, I also forgot to mention that... And I just wanted, I also, um, forgot to mention that, uh, had an opportunity, I met with the presidents of both the Paraprofessionals Association and the Teachers Association as well as with Mr. Gregoire to determine what these reductions will look like. And I appreciated the collaborative effort, um, in order to, to come up with these, these numbers and these ideas. So I'm presenting that in front of the board this evening as a proposal. Um, as you well know, it's the board's decision as to whether you would like to, uh, implement any of those reductions or not. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
These, these proposed reductions, it appears as though it would not affect, um, staff and support.
The only staff and support that it would affect would be in the Bright Beginnings Program. And this, I'd like to also mention that, um, based on Judy's comment earlier, um, I did take the opportunity to come into the school without an intent of stirring anything up with teachers, but to be fair to the staff members that would be discussed this evening around their positions and notifying them that it will be discussed this evening out of fairness. Uh, so I just wanted to mention that and that's why, um, there might be rumors that the superintendent was walking through the halls, stirring it up with the staff.
So during the budget process, the school board knew what we needed to staff the school. And the budget committee knew what we needed to staff the school. And then the voters voted on it. So wouldn't that mean that the voters approved all of those positions to staff the school? And, and it was their vote that, um, we need to, to consider and abide by?
That's correct. We need to abide by the eight point six million dollars that the voters approved. That bottom line. It's not specific to positions that are approved. It's specific to an operating budget line, which was the eight point six million dollars and that's what we need to stay with.
I think the process also doesn't include, you know, considering what staffing is necessary at the school level, or the SAU level. I, I seriously felt as though it was a threat, you know, at the last meeting that, that, you know, this was one of the solutions and I didn't, I wasn't comfortable at all with the idea of a reduction in force because through all my awareness of the whole process, everything at the school, in the SAU, uh, you know, there's no positions that are unnecessary or, um, non-essential. And I think that everybody that voted kind of felt the same way, although there was only fifteen percent of the votes, voters that appeared. I just, I just wasn't very comfortable with the idea of, um, anybody talking about a reduction in force for any reason.
It's by far the least comfortable situation that you can possibly be and I'll agree with you a hundred percent. You know, when we look at the two hundred and forty thousand dollars, that actually, you know, that includes close to, um, close to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars in staffing that are paid out of federal funds. So you are talking about staffing when you're accepting federal funds and if the federal funds are not included in your overall operating budget, then you're looking at two positions that are part of that. So that's what we're making up.
They were, that, that two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, as the school district attorney made clear during the deliberative session, that was included in our budget. She said that at, I believe, minute thirty-five of the discussion. So if those anticipated funds were included in our gross budgeting process and they were specifically voted on, you know, as part of that budget, how can we say that the funds aren't there?
I, I believe I, I went over this when we, I clarified the MS twenty-seven. The two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars were included in the school board's recommended line. However, they were not included in the budget committee's recommended line. And that was the number that was voted on, was the budget committee's number.
Yeah, but I don't know if the budget committee, they may have taken out the money that equaled the amount of that grant, you know, and I'm not, I'm not advocating grant money or anything like that. But I don't think they specifically said, "You can't accept a grant to cover the costs of those positions." I don't think that was the intent of the budget committee. I think the intent of the budget committee was trying to reduce a budget that in their opinion was overblown. So I mean, I, I heard the district, the school district attorney say that the money was included in our gross operating budget at two seventy-three. I was sitting right beside her when she said it and that's what confused me at the last meeting. I was like, I'm pretty sure, it was clear that those were anticipated funds. They weren't considered unanticipated funds. And so, just because the budget committee reduced the number and the legislative body approved that number, it doesn't mean that the positions covered under the grant need to be eliminated.
That's, and that's not, you don't see any of the positions that are grant-funded on this proposed budget reduction. I'll try and clarify this. When, when our district attorney said the two hundred seventy-three thousand dollars is in the operating budget, we can't accept those federal funds to cover the positions. However, those monies go against a line item within our operating budget. So we have to, that, we can say, yes, we're going to accept the federal funds to pay for Title One programming. However, if you don't budget for that within your, your eight point six million dollars, then you need to find those monies. So, we're, bottom line, we're shy of those monies for those positions because they're not included in the eight point six million dollars.
Bonnie, go ahead.
Uh, Michael, can I ask you, how many students does our math interventionist, um, assist with, how many students does he assist with on a daily basis?
I'm not sure what that number would be, toe, Bonnie.
I'd have to get that exact number to you, Bonnie.
Because what I'm really considering is like, I'm, I went over the budget and although it wouldn't be fun, we were, and I see where you're getting, your, a lot of your ideas are the same that I had, but mine was not, um, I can see not filling one of the positions, but I didn't take any positions away and I, I guess I would like, I wanted to, I don't really want to take an interventionist away and I understand, um, your proposal for the preschool, but I guess what I'm going to ask is that, instead of rushing to a conclusion, if the seven, eight, ten of us with the pairs and the, the presidents and the principal and, and even you, Michael, if we can just take another week or so to really scour over the budget, to see where the pennies can be pinched and to see what we can do without, um, take, I don't want to take a math interventionist away from the children, especially with, and I, and I, and I am concerned about the preschool. I, I just want to know what the other options are, like, if we're getting rid of our preschool program, are there enough openings in the preschools in our town? Are they handicap accessible for any of the handicap needs that we would have? Do they have openings for preschool? And do they have a facility where the, the PT, the OT and the speech can be handled within them? So I would, I would hate to close a program quickly if I don't have the research to back that the children that we serve won't be able to get those services. So I guess I'm asking, would anyone else like to consider maybe holding off and really scrutinizing again and, and maybe thinking outside the box a little bit?
I agree. Got to be, we got, it's got to be there.
This is my initial proposal. Feel free to go through the budget and come up with your own proposals and present those as well. So this is my initial proposal. It's not final.
Okay.
So by all means.
So when I get back, Michael, I would love to have an opportunity to sit and speak with you.
Sure.
I don't know if you want to do that as a whole board or if I should do it individually with you or if I should propose it to my chair and then have her propose it to you. What step would you like me to take?
That's completely up to the board, Bonnie. I, I, as I said, I'll, I'll be more than happy to sit with anybody and go over the, uh, go over the budget. I've already taken the opportunity to, to meet with the representatives for the teachers and the paraprofessionals. Uh, so if the board is, is wanting to, you know, go through this, this budget, um, knowing that reductions need to be made, uh, and I, I do emphasize that they, we do not want to go into a fiscal year knowing that we have a deficit. As, as I said earlier, it's bad business. Um, if you want to take the time to continue looking at this budget, feel free. However, the board wants to do it is up to the board. I'll be happy to be part of that conversation.
I guess from my point of view, I'm wondering if we should sit down in a workshop, all of us, and pound our heads together and see what we can come up with and throw different scenarios out.
I agree.
I agree with that.
And I know that you've already done that with the presidents of the both unions and the principal and I so respect that the time that you took. I just, I want to make sure before I make a decision that I've really thought through and know the outcome of some of these programs.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, the board's in agreement. We can set something up to look at it or if you guys all want to do it individually, we can bring it to the next meeting.
I think a workshop's the way to go. Chair.
Yes.
It would have to, it would have to happen before the next meeting because I need to notify teachers that would not be receiving a contract by April fifteenth. So if you do plan on having a workshop, it needs to happen sooner than your next meeting. By what date? I'm sorry? April fifteenth.
Where are their SAU employees? Do they, do they have, do they have the same, the same?
Yes, according.
Do they have the same criteria?
Yes, all certified staff members, regardless of their affiliation, um, need to be notified as to whether they're going to receive a contract or not by April fifteenth.
Okay.
Um, can I say something about, I, what you proposed? I, what I'm hearing, what you're saying is that the kids in the preschool would go to other preschools in the community and receive services. My son, Mark, um, is an atypical, um, boy with autism and he initially had gone to a different preschool in town and they actually had recommended he go to Bright Beginnings because he wasn't thriving there. And he was struggling with speech and OT, but, um, since he's been at the Bright Beginnings Program, he's been there for almost a year. He was pretty much considered non-verbal and through this program, he has, he's done amazing. He's talking, he's responding to us, he's making eye contact. And the work that Judy has done, as well as Sandra, Justin, Beth, Ashley has, I can't even explain how grateful I am and I just am heartbroken to hear that this is being considered. Um, I can't stress enough how amazing this program is and really, my son was struggling so bad and when he was at that other preschool, they were struggling with him and he just would sit in the corner and, you know, being a parent and watching him be in, in a different preschool and what you're recommending, I just can see him going a step back and not, and not thriving and it's very upsetting to me. So I really would urge that you look at your numbers and do something because, um, not only have I seen my son do amazing, but I have also seen other kids that are growing with him just, just, they're doing great and Judy is wonderful and Sandra and everybody else involved in this program.
Thank you.
I'd also like to speak to that a little bit too. I'm, uh, my name is Ashley. I'm the occupational therapist actually out in Bright Beginnings. Um, and I have a few different contracts, so I work in a lot of different places and schools. And the, the thing about Bright Beginnings that makes it work so well and why we've seen so much progress with Mark and his peers is because I can be there for the whole program. If our kiddos are dispersed across a lot of different programs, then what would happen is that I would have to go in, do my fifteen, twenty minutes of services and then leave and then go see another child at another school, um, and the context just looks very different. So where I am right now in Bright Beginnings, it gives me the opportunity to work with children when it matters most rather than in those fifteen minutes that I happen to be able to be in the room. Um, it just gives a lot more opportunity for carryover, for being able to discuss with a teacher and see the behavior rather than hear about it in a consult real quick and address it that way. It's just much more effective, um, therapy for, for speech and OT.
Thank you.
Judy. Judy, I'm the teacher out of Bright Beginnings and I do want to, um, thank the superintendent. He did come out, um, and talk with me and the staff over lunch about what would be being discussed tonight, um, and I really appreciated that. I might have been maybe a little overly emotional when I was singing, um, about, um, what was that song we were singing today about the sunshine?
Oh, yeah, singing for sunshine.
You are my sunshine. Yes, I was singing it at circle time and I might have been a little overly emotional. The children were like, okay, she's really getting into it. But, um, I, I, I know that there's some really hard budget cuts that need to be made. And I'm just asking the board to please, if they can, really before you cut preschool. Um, I feel like this is the fourth year, I think, for Bright Beginnings and I think I and my staff have worked so hard and we've earned a really good reputation for providing an excellent education, um, and giving children within and without special needs what they need to succeed. And I know from, from talking to the Paul School staff that they are succeeding. Um, and I am looking forward to hopefully years of continued work with Paul School and more importantly, though, I'm worried about, um, what will happen to the preschoolers.
The auditor did say that, that there are other districts that don't gross budget. Are they not going to get their grant money too? I know, I know it's a rhetorical question, but there are, I know some that don't gross budget. I can't believe they're not going to get the grant money. Could you tell me who you talked to at DRA?
Michelle Clark. A few times.
And I feel like the budget committee's doing a bad work here. I want to explain that when that, uh, two, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars was taken out of the budget. Mrs. Mason asked Mr. Tracy three times, three times, "If the budget committee takes this money out, puts it or an article back to the way it was written before, will you still be able to accept grant funds and put it into the gr- uh, the Federal Projects Fund?" And you said yes, three times. That's why we did it. If you said no, we would have looked at it a different habit.
Thank you.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would say yes again if you asked that question because we can't accept federal funds. However, we can't, we can't overexpend what the voters voted on at the eight point six million dollars. So I can take in.
That's not what I said. That's not what I said.
The question was as to whether or not I could accept federal funds and put it into the grant revenue line and I could do that and I will still do that next year. However, I don't have those monies in my operating budget to offset that cost.
Clearly, she asked, Judy, could you repeat it to him? Maybe you, you could, uh, maybe you'll understand what you said.
So you're, what I want to know right now is you're saying you're still going to accept the grant money this year, this next year? You can still accept the grant money. That's what you just said, right?
Correct. Yep.
You can still accept it.
That's correct.
And then I asked the auditor just this evening, "Can we continue to accept the grant money and run it through the Federal Projects Fund?" And he said, "Yes."
Correct.
So I don't understand what the problem is.
The problem is we can't accept monies above the eight point six million dollars that are anticipated revenues.
You just said you can accept it.
I can accept them, but I can't spend them above.
I can accept them, but I can't spend them above the eight point six million dollars, Judy.
This is not being a question in the Department of Budget Committee meeting, not at all. We changed the term.
No, the nice thing is, is that you always need people like me to point your finger at, Priscilla.
Mr. Tercy?
I'm sorry.
You deserve it. Stop.
Apologize.
Thank you. Okay.
There's many other items in the budget that we can look at, I think.
And you should all take a look at it.
And we will work out with this.
New bus-
Are you willing to look at, uh, some suggestions from the public as far as cutting in the budget?
That's totally up to the board. If it's a consensus, we will certainly take any-
Anything will help.
Anything you guys wanna throw out there at us.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, Judy, sorry.
Um, I find it disturbing that you're cutting programs that affect children. Um, so you figured out how to not cut any teachers, but now you're affecting the children. When you're talking about the math intervention program, that's affecting the children. When you're talking about the Bright Beginnings program, that's affecting children. And I think that you should look elsewhere in the budget, keep those programs in the, um, school, and look elsewhere in the budget, the things that won't affect children.
And that's what we fully intend to do. We don't wanna cut programs that involve children.
Well, you, I didn't hear anything about the sports program being cut. That's something that just started.
I understand that, and I myself looked at that.
That's not education, that's, that's sports. I think the educational part of it is more important in the school than sports.
And I agree with you.
It's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
That's why we need to get together.
Right, which is why we all need to put our heads together and see if we can come up with this. And again, any feedback? We'll be more than happy to take it. All right. Sandra.
Just to put the devil's advocate, um, we're not doing away with the program. We're just reorganizing how we're providing those services to the kids in Bright Beginning. Yes, it is better to have it in-house, but we're not doing away with it. We're just reorganizing a different way for the student.
Thank you. All right, thank you, guys. New business?
You have the opening of the food service bids. They're right here.
How many did we get?
Two.
Two.
How many?
Two.
Two?
We got food.
We got some food.
Lobster for everyone.
Should we consider the, uh, DJE, Policy DJE, and, and, I mean, how long was this posted for? How long was the request for proposals out there? Is this the first time we requested proposals? And should we try to comply with Policy DJE and seek a third, third party to bid before we start opening these up?
We are under a timeline, is my understanding.
Which is June thirtieth, right?
Right.
So June thirtieth is too much.
I understand that, but we have to have something to be able to go forward. So, do we wanna try for a third bid? Do we wanna put that back out there?
I wanna comply with policy, yeah, that's all.
No, I understand that. Bonnie?
I don't believe in the past, um, in the past two times we've put it out to bid, I don't believe we got more than two either. I don't, I think we're on a very limited number of companies that actually service our area. I know that we had quite, we had a list of five or six.
Five, yep.
But if they're willing to come to us is, is a different, um, a different situation. So I know that in the past, Ralph, we were concerned that we didn't have three, but when you don't have companies that come out, it's one of those times that you have to say, one feasible, regretfully.
So the answer to my question is, well, my question was, how lo- is this the first time we've put it out in an RFP? How long ago did that happen, and, and is it, is it reasonable or feasible to put it out one more time and seek one, you know, to try to get that third bid? That's the question. I mean, consensus for the board can decide to accept that with a majority vote.
Mr. Tercy?
I believe the original bid was brought to the board, I wanna say, six weeks ago. And then it was posted immediately following, uh, in all of the circulation of the papers, the three, three papers that are now within the policy. We, we called and invited, um, I don't remember how, five companies to, uh, submit a bid and come to this, come to the bid walk. Um, we had three that came to the bid walk, and we've had two that have submitted their, their bids. So, I feel that we've, we've done our due diligence of posting it and giving ample time, um, however.
The policy does allow the board its discretion, so, I mean, I'm, I just had to throw the question out there because-
So we had three come to the walk.
Correct. We had two, uh, we had two that requested additional time to submit the bid. Um, and I didn't wanna start bending on deadlines, um, because we also had one that didn't request that, and one that did request it got the bid in on time, so I wanted the board to know that as well.
I'd like to see us move forward.
Are these two, the two that requested more extra time?
One of them.
One of them, the other one?
The other one, did not, right.
As of yet?
As of, as of yesterday at four o'clock.
Did they give any inclination as to what they were requesting for extra time?
I don't believe so, Nathan, I, they actually had sent us a s- a series of questions to answer, and additional information to provide, um, during the bid development process, so.
They had a true interest.
Mm-hmm.
Has anybody con- tried to contact them to see if they plan on putting a bid in at this point, or?
When they originally contacted us, requesting additional time, um, it was a couple days later that we had, we had said no for the additional time, out of fairness to the other companies that were getting their bids on time. Also knowing we're under, you know, some times and restrictions to get this in place.
This doesn't include cafe services, either, does it? 'Cause I'm sure they're gonna rebid, or they're gonna come forward.
Cafe services is one of the bids that are-
Oh, okay.
Are here in front of you. Yeah, there's only five that's available on yours.
I, in my opinion, I would feel comfortable moving forward with the bids. If, if two companies can get the bid in on time, I don't, I, I think that that's ample time. I think, I think six weeks is ample time to get your questions in order and get your figures together. It's not like this is gonna be their first school.
Make the motion, Bonnie.
Oh, you have, I didn't know you have to make a motion. I'll make a motion to open the bids. And move forward with two.
Second?
Discussion?
Okay.
Um, I, I wish we could have actually given them more time to have a third bid, but we did, we didn't. And I don't believe the other two were, probably were available to bid anyways. But I think we're gonna have to go forward with what we have. And I don't think it's fair to th- those two that did get in to go forward with this.
But, but what about that third company? I mean, if, if they were told, if they were told yes, m- maybe their, their bid would have been here. Uh, I don't know, but I agree with-
By the deadline, you mean?
Well, no, they, they requested additional time, so why-
How much more additional time did they ask for?
We don't know that.
Do we know?
No.
No, 'cause they were told no, but that's my point is, i- if they were, should someone contact them? I mean, it should have been when they requested more time, how much more time are you requesting? And then, instead of saying no, they could have notified us, we could have made that decision at then, and then maybe they would have had their bid in by now. Um, uh, it, uh, could, could someone contact them and see how long it would take them to get their, could they have their, could we do this at the next meeting? Contact that, put the company that was told no and can do this at the next meeting? And then that would give us three bids.
Correct me.
Yes, you're right.
Am I correct saying that one of these bids asked for additional time also, but they got, but they got it in?
Yes, correct. And they received the same answer as the other company.
And how long is, how long did they give them? I was, I can't remember the time.
To submit the bid, it's been anything about four weeks?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Almost a month?
Hmm.
Well, it's a question.
They were told no, then they wouldn't have moved forward.
Well, this other person did too.
Well, right, but in the best interest of the taxpayers, the more bids we have, the better it is for the taxpayers.
Purpose of the policy.
And I would, uh, do we have enough time to do this at the next meeting? Could someone with a call?
You gotta call the vote, Steve. You gotta call the motion, move the motion.
I don't know, it's fair.
I'll offer my opinion that-
Throw it out there.
I will, thank you, um, just out of respect for the two companies that got it in on time. The bottom line. It would be very nice to have three bids. I don't disagree. Five bids would be fantastic. The more the merrier. However, you also have to respect the fact that companies did meet the requirement, which could give you an indication as to how things will be in the future.
No. And the, these two companies here, uh, one of those, the one that's not Cafe Services, did they come out to the visit?
They came to the visit, yes.
Did the other company do, come do the visit also, who asked for the extension?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's required.
Can move the question.
Can we move the question?
We certainly can. I'll in favor to go with two proposals for food service.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Okay.
So we need to open those, Madam Chair?
Yep.
Yes.
And then what we'll do is we'll review them, put together the summary sheet for the board to review at the next meeting, as we discuss the process.
As we discuss, yeah.
Key, thanks.
Somebody?
Keys on. Seen our logo lately? Our logo lately?
No food? No food?
No food.
Should be quiet over there.
Yeah, please.
Here you go, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Cafe services is correct.
Right.
May, may, Nathan, can you save mine as the SAU and I'll come and sign the manifest and pick it up when I come back?
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Box of lunch, Heather.
Madam Chair, would you like to release it now to the rest of the providers?
Um, I'd like to, but I'm trying to find the proposal for- This one?
I don't know.
This is this one?
It's Cafe Services.
Right, but it's the proposal for the services.
Everything came with, not a copy, tell me.
So, what proposal are here?
We'll get another copy. Yeah, someone, Bonnie was, I saw Bonnie.
I'm not seeing my, so, is it in there? Is it in that? Okay. So? See it on? I'm not seeing a number, where am I seeing it?
I'm not seeing.
Five ten.
Actually, Fresh Picks is a division of Cafe.
That's what I'm hoping. Here we go.
The page?
Really, 'cause I'm not seeing it.
When did you find that?
Uh, it's here, I'm just trying to make sure I've given them the correct number, the correct number.
Madam Chair, what we'll do is we'll go through, all we, we need to let people know at this point is the names of the companies that submitted the bid, then we can put together the summary sheet and grant totals.
Um, Fresh Picks.
What company was it?
Cafe Services, Cafe Services.
Mm-hmm.
And then Fitzvo- Vo, V O U, V O G T.
Voight.
Voit, no, Vo, V O G T. And Associates.
I saw that.
V O G T and Associates. And we can put together the summary sheets, um, I'm kind of hoping they have a summary sheet, but this is-
Net food cost?
I'm not seeing it.
Are they New Hampshire companies making proposals? They're both from New Hampshire. You all are from New Hampshire.
Looks like it's total.
I don't know.
Fresh Picks is.
If it is.
I want a dairy.
Can you think? Right.
Are we gonna, um, ask Lino to take a look at these? I know he had an interest in, was trying to assist in the past.
This is your risk.
He did have interest.
I'd love to get the public a number, I just can't.
Both are from New Hampshire?
Good. That answers my question. Unfortunately, unfortunately, we didn't get a better bid.
Are we gonna, are we gonna ask Lino to take a look? I know he was interested in this in the past, and I believe he's, he, I ran into him a while ago, and he was asking whether we were gonna be putting this out to bid and-
Didn't we contact Lino?
Yeah, paid him a visit.
I sent him a copy of the RFP.
Yeah.
And I told him that when the bids came, and he said if we needed to look, that he'd be more than happy to look. So if I get the consensus, I can bring them to him.
I don't see how it would be fair.
There's someone with a pizza.
Hmm?
There's someone with a pizza.
I have some.
What's that you're doing?
Are you searching for the numbers?
I'm searching for numbers still.
Um, I think. Fritz Voight's. Number eleven.
Okay.
Actually, number ten, I'm sorry.
Right.
That back sheet?
That's right, two hundred nine dollars on it. That can't be right.
Two oh four.
Hmm? Two oh four.
Must be last year.
Right.
Oh, this shit.
That's what I don't understand with that kind of traffic.
They're, they're projecting a profit. Fifty-three ninety-eight thirty.
Saying they'll, they'll provide the service for no, at no cost to the school, is that it?
They're taking the income and then all their expenses and they're saying that we stand to profit fifty-four hundred on. According to their numbers.
According to their numbers.
This is. What they're projecting, I didn't see anything on Cafe Services, this is what I was.
Right, I don't, I'm not, I just want the bottom line.
Is this one?
Right, one fifty. There's two. One fifty-three.
That's not what I see.
So it would be this. Or this.
Go to the.
Two oh four.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah, go over there.
Is that the number?
I would say that is.
Two oh four.
Which company?
Um.
Fritz.
Fritz.
Yeah, Cafe Services is projecting a thousand nine net surplus.
Nine. Cafe Services is coming in at one fifty-three six eighty-six with a thousand nine surplus.
But that's, that's only half of it, that's only half of it.
Right.
That's just the expenses, they have, you have to take in what they're projecting for revenues also. And so really, I think that's the, the net is probably at this point, so they go through it all, but.
And so I'll be going through and get a flat number.
Cafe Services is projecting a net surplus of a thousand nine dollars and Fritz Voight is projecting fifty-four hundred net surplus.
Okay. Michael, you wanna do the summary sheets for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Have them for you at the next board meeting.
Right, yeah, no. Two hundred three, okay.
So that's for about a dollar fifty a meal, this is a dollar forty?
Right. All right, I'm gonna hand this off to Michael so he can do this, so we can get going, we can move on to this. If he can do this a breakdown.
Michael, can we just make sure that we confirm with Michael on the state what we have to charge for lunch next year?
Michael, can you make a note of that?
Yeah.
Please?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They recommend a number.
Okay. Okay, and a new business, we have a request for the use of facilities for board approval.
Any questions? Any questions, just mask away.
Okay.
See that the Wakefield Food Pantry is requesting to utilize a multipurpose room on June twenty-seventh as a fundraiser.
This is approved by Jerry anyways, right?
Mm-hmm. Uh, it actually looks like they're going according to policies, KF, KF-two, KFD-dash-R, and KFC. Looks like, um, this part of the town is taking the proper procedure steps as the school board. Whether or not they, we can do that. I'd like to, um, offer a motion to approve this request and with that motion offer to waive the fees other than the custodial fees. In appreciation for the fact that they are coming forward and complying with policy.
Bob?
We need a motion to, to approve this request as a school board?
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Isn't this Jerry's, Jerry's area?
Jerry?
I, I looked at this as an outside agency, the other, the, under the policy, what I'm authorized to approve are school and rec functions. While this is, it directly benefits the students in our school through the backpack program, it's still an outside agency that's not affiliated with the local government.
They do this every year here?
They typically have done it out at the baseball field, but they were under weather issues.
Right.
Um, so they came to me and asked them, and I said, you know, fill this form out, this is one that does have to get approved by the board. So I asked them to provide me with other supporting materials as a, you know, extra insurance. Fill up the whole harmless thing, uh, sheet that we have in our policy, so to make sure that we were following the policies.
So my motion fails without a second, huh?
Oh, a second.
Can you repeat that, Ralph?
Yeah, my motion was to approve this request and waive the, other than custodial fees, waive the fee for the multipurpose room, sixty dollars. In appreciation for them going through the process.
Are we gonna outline that for them? I don't see that the custodial fee.
Yeah, I do.
Says bring that, uh, bring both copies, fall school custodial fees will be charged unless other arrangements are made in advance. So the minimum charge for the multipurpose room seems to be sixty dollars and, and that's what I'd like to waive for the Wakefield Food Pantry's request.
What are the custodial fees?
I believe those are based on the, the number of hours, I believe.
Yes, they are.
So I think that's defined within the policy.
Okay.
But I'm just saying, should we, should we put it on here just so it's clear for everyone, especially the, the people from the food pantry? So they know it's in writing.
Bob?
Nope, I'll just wear it to a little kid.
Okay.
Could we, uh, is that, would that be all right for you, if we just list the custodial fee on this? So the people from the food pantry understand that going in?
Yeah, I think if the, if the motion prevails, then, then, uh, administration would probably be able to delineate the cost and, and show the, um, show the waiver of the fee of the multipurpose room.
Right, but I'm, all I'm asking is, I think just to be fair for, if the actual cost, custodial cost is on this document.
If they can estimate it.
Well, it's, it's nine to two, it's five hours, so by policy, it's, how, how much is, um, does anybody have the policy offhand and see what it's, I don't recall how much offhand the custodial fee is.
What is it? Is it just the, it says the minimum charge is sixty dollars? Isn't that what they usually charge when they clean up after an organization like that?
I think it's defined separately, Bonnie, the custodial fees.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it'd probably be the, whatever custodian's there and they're wait, hide out.
All I'm asking is if the custodial fee, we're gonna waive all the fees except for, if we're gonna, if the custodial fee could be presented to the foods, uh, food pantry, so that they understand what the fee is prior to.
Mr. Tracy?
Mr. Greg War, we'll work with Mr. Adams to determine what that fee will be for that, for that service, for the custodian. We'll put down what they're with food pantry, so they know what the cost is gonna be.
I, my plan is to call them tomorrow, let them know that they've been approved or not. So we can tell, I can give them that information at that point.
Did we get a second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Wakefield Food Pantry. Good luck with your endeavor.
So. Policy EFA, the meal policy for the second reading.
To make a motion to move, uh, to approve this meal policy, EFA.
Uh, second for dis.
Go ahead, Bonnie.
I was gonna second for discussion.
Go ahead.
Well, I just was, because we have to retake public comment on the second reading, so.
Anybody in the public that wants to comment on this policy?
Okay, no public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, second reading for J I C D D, student discipline of school actions.
I would like to make a motion to, um, approve policy J I C D D as written.
I'll second that for discussion.
Seeing no comments, all in favor?
Act on it.
Aye.
Aye.
Well, policy J I C K, pupil safety and violence prevention for second reading.
Pupil?
People?
For a motion to.
Said pupil.
Pupil.
It's not like you said pupil on.
Sorry, it's pupil.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, um, approve J I C K.
I'll second it for discussion.
Judy?
When this law was originally passed, the school board had to create a committee, um, including members of the community parents, to create this policy. Now, I thought I heard at the last meeting that the School Board Association had given you a recommended, new recommended policy, is that what this is?
So, I think so.
Bonnie, was that the new policy from the School Board Association?
This is what they're hoping to replace the prior policy with, the one, this one didn't, the prior policy did not, um, it wasn't bullying related, and when the bullying push came through, they, they reckon, they now recommend this policy over the other pupil safety policy.
Mr. Tracy?
The original policy that this would be replacing, um, it, it was not as detailed as J I C K and I believe, I'm not sure when this was started to be developed, I'm not sure if that was part of that, the community part of that as well, Judy. And Bonnie brought this to my attention, that this had been worked on in the past, and so we brought it to replace the current policy, it's more detailed based on the, the, uh, the changes in the law. So it is a much more detailed policy that identifies bullying and, and really puts the, um, the process in place, um, for addressing bullying situations, so it's much more detailed and it's, it's, uh.
But does the law still require that community piece? Should you have had formed a new committee? I just have a question, because there was a community piece to this when the law was originally passed. So, do this without forming another committee and involving the community?
I'm just not sure if the committee was, uh, community members were involved in this development of this J I C K, Bonnie could probably speak to that.
Bonnie?
Original one? Yes, that was on the committee.
No, this, this one here.
Oh, okay.
This, this is one that was started, this was in my policy book, Michael, this had been started but never adopted.
Okay.
That's not true.
So I believe that there was a committee in place. Year, you know, years ago, and I'm talking, you know, after I was on the board the first time. That there was a committee in place that worked on this policy, it was in my policy book, but it had never been adopted.
It had been adopted.
It was definitely adopted.
It was definitely adopted.
We're being told it was adopted.
No, I'm not sure.
If it was, it was not, um, it was not time stamped in my policy book. So if it was, then, and if it's, maybe we're supposed to just be remending, but in my policy book, it had not been time stamped, that, that it was, had been accepted.
I've not had this policy in my book, what I have had is, in prior to coming here, a procedure that reflects exactly the, the RSA. So I, I'm not quite sure if there's a crossover there, but, you know, what, what we're, what is being proposed to adopt today is the same thing we're doing in the school, we have, have been since I've been here.
Ralph?
Um, does anybody recall the policy? Um, does anybody recall the policy lettering that, that this is to replace? I mean, maybe because it's a different lettering, Judy and Priscilla may recall, you know, working on that particular policy.
I don't have my agendas with me, it was on the agenda probably four meetings ago.
I believe it was JICBB.
JICBB?
Madam Chair, I make a recommendation, recommend that you table this, and we could go back to the minutes to see if JICK was approved in the past, and then we can bring it forward just to reaffirm.
Or, and also maybe to double check to see if there is a community committee that was supposed to be initiated by this.
Yep.
Take care of that.
I'll withdraw my second through motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Make a motion to table this for further investigation.
I'll second.
I'll second, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Actually, could I, um, ask a question about that?
Certainly.
Um, it says that of a, um, an audio or video recording is used as part of the student discipline proceedings. People are made aware of the fact that a recording and audio recording device is being used for that purpose, correct? Doesn't specifically state that, but I would hope if someone was being recorded or audio recorded, that they were notified prior to. It doesn't necessarily say that they ought to be notified. But I think in the, you know, to protect the school district, I think there should be notification if that's going to happen.
Bonnie?
On the last page.
Uh, I, I guess I think that in today's society with telephones and kids and children, telephones and children, things are gonna get videoed, that they're not gonna ask permission to video. But if it's something that shows someone getting beat up or, uh, uh, something horrible going on, I don't think that person's gonna go up to them and say, hey, just so you know, I videotaped you. I think that this is in prevention for them. I don't think it's like, I think parents know that on the school bus and in corridors in the school, that there are video cameras there, but I don't, I don't think that in today's society, you can make sure that everybody knows, I mean, you should be watching yourself, but I don't think that, um, I, I think that that's hard to, to implement.
Steve?
Um, school buses are specifically notated within the RSA. I believe the key word here is proceeding. A student discipline proceeding, which a proceeding I would take as an official proceeding, and therefore, I believe that there should be notification to all parties to, um, take care of any liability to the school district that, it's just a formality, I understand, but when you're talking about, especially audio recording, you really need to add a proceeding, I think is the key word, and it probably should be noted that all parties will be notified of such recording at a proceeding. Especially if it's gonna become part of their educational record.
Ralph?
Why wouldn't the governmental body wanna, wanna tell everybody that they're being watched?
Why wouldn't they?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would think is...
Well, as Edward Snowden, he could probably do it.
I, I...
Battery's done.
I think that it would be our responsibility to notify...
Well, I know, but it doesn't state that, and I think it just, it might be in the best interest of the school district to add that, that parties will be notified at a proceeding if they're, they're to be video or, and or audio recorded during a proceeding.
We can easily add that word in at the end of that paragraph.
Well, we're gonna take a look at this anyway for verification purposes, so we can...
Well, that's why I thought I'd bring it up now, so when it comes back, that will be in there. Thank you.
Old business?
Well, I'll let her know, battery's low.
His battery's low.
Yes, I will reconnect.
Bonnie, your battery's low, so...
My battery's low.
Jerry's battery's low, so we may have to reconnect you on his iPad.
Okay, let me know.
Comments by the public, uh, correspondence, sorry. Public comment?
Are you skipping things?
Excuse me?
Are you skipping things?
No.
Old business, correspondence?
I went to old business, I went to correspondence.
Okay.
Um, go ahead.
Um, I have two questions. First, um, if you want public input on second readings, how does the public get copies of those prior to a meeting? Or can it be made available to us as we come into the meeting?
We should have, you know, that's a good point, we should have them here, as, as you're coming, maybe get some copies.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Okay.
And my second question
Mm-hmm.
is, um, has the S.A.U., um, Withdrawal Committee made arrangements, um, for their first meeting yet?
I know that they have, they have not set up a meeting, a formal meeting yet, no.
And where would these meetings be held, if they have them?
Mr. Fogg?
Um, I'm not sure what the, the planning committee's going to do, but I think on April sixth, the Budget Committee is meeting to appoint a member to the planning committee, and I, hopefully, I don't know, I haven't even put it out there, but it'd be nice to, maybe after they break, hold the first meeting of that planning committee.
I don't, if you saw Mr. Tursi's email, but he's available on the thirteenth, so maybe we can...
I didn't see that email.
So, maybe we could post a meeting for the thirteenth.
What day is the thirteenth?
Uh, Monday.
Monday, yeah.
You're thinking, you're thinking April thirteenth, huh?
I'm sorry?
You're thinking April thirteenth would be the first meeting?
Yes, that's...
And where would it be?
I would assume it'd be a...
All these decisions have to be made, I guess.
Um, with the timing?
Um, I don't know, after power, like, let me see if we can get ahold of people and...
Get consensuses from...
Oh, actually, I, I, you know...
I talked to all the people, I talked to four people, and Monday's good, and one wanted it seven for the first meeting.
That's conflicts with the Conservation Commission meeting at seven.
Yeah.
The thirteenth is?
Yeah, there's two members on the Conservation Commission on that same...
Yeah, 'cause we were talking about the first and third, 'cause you're second and fourth, right?
That's correct.
And we were thinking about the first and third.
I mean, if we could do it, if we could do the initiative at six o'clock instead of seven, then we could still make our Conservation Commission meeting.
I could check with one of the other members. Who's good? Actually, you're the...
Don't point at me.
Well, you're the chair of the...